March 24th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. I would like to make note that we have all members of council present this evening, including the city administrator, John Behanko. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item, item four this evening under general, we do have a very special presentation. I would like to invite Police Chief Elliot Moya to the podium for a special recognition for our Saco PD.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for, uh, thank you for having me. I am Elliot Moya. I'm the chief of police just down south here in Elliott. Uh, yes, my name is Elliot and I work in Elliott. Just get that out of the way. But, uh, I'm here today as a representative for the main chiefs of police association, um, as well as the main law enforcement accreditation program. Um, and it's my honor today to be here to present this accreditation plaque to the Saco Police Department. I want to kind of explain, you may know what MLIP is, um, but I just want to give a quick overview, and I know it's been a busy day for, uh, for everybody, but, um, to understand kind of the undertaking that this is. Um, you know, accreditation is the gold standard for the state of Maine, and there's a hundred and sixty-plus standards that the police department has to, um, really work towards. Um, you know, some of the standards they may have already met, some they may exceed, or some are completely new to some agencies. So, to have a team and work together, um, you know, to create this, this huge project, um, is, is, is truly quite the undertaking. Um, it takes strong leadership, it's from the top down. Um, you know, I did it in my small agency and it was, I felt like I was involved in every, more than I wanted to be, to be quite frank. Um, but it does, it takes a dedicated team, uh, a commitment and a commitment to excellence in the community. Um, it's, it's again, no, no easy task. It requires policy reviews, um, procedures, internal controls, uh, you name it. And then on top of that, once the police department has felt that they've made, uh, they've reached these standards, then a whole team of assessors will come in, which was a really vulnerable moment for me as a chief, to then open up all the cabinets and doors and say, okay, have at it. We showed you on paper that we can do it, but now, now you're here to see if we can actually, if we actually have done it. So, to achieve that again is, is really remarkable and a really good feeling. Uh, and I hope that Chief Clements and the entire Saco Police Department feels, feels that way. Um, so, not to be too long-winded here, but, uh, I'm here to congratulate Chief Clements, um, and the Saco Police Department and, and offer this plaque that, you know, reflects like professionalism, pride, accountability, and just all the hard work that I know that they put into it. So, uh, on behalf of the MLIP program, I'm privileged to present this accreditation plaque to you, chief, uh, and to all the members of the Saco Police Department.
If I, if I could just take a quick minute, um, this is a lot of work, and this work could not be done without the team that's standing behind me. Uh, the folks that dug in, did the work, uh, policy creation, coming up approves, everything. I have an amazing team of people. Uh, that's what makes you good, is the team that's underneath you, and I cannot thank them enough. So, uh, again, I would like to thank my team for the great job that they did. Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. On behalf of the city council, the city of Saco, thank you to all of you. Um, it's been a trying few years. We know that we've overcome a lot of obstacles, and we appreciate all of the work and dedication that you and your entire team give to the city. Thank you. Okay, that now takes us to item five, and that is committee correspondence to council. Are there any committee members wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing any. Now taking us to item six, and that is public comment this evening. If you wish to address the council, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to address the council.
Hello, everyone. Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. Three topics, contract zones. I have reviewed Attorney Katsia Fekes' legal opinion and will follow up with a letter to the council and the planning board disagreeing with some of his premises, especially his opinion of, in quotes, "did not explicitly repeal the contract zone agreements and vesting rights." Attorney Katsia Fekes was present and highly involved in the 2020 when ZOR's planning board members requested CZA reference in text of the zoning ordinance as well as their attendant contract zones on the zoning map per statutory requirements. To date, Saco has never complied. He was highly involved, he was put on notice in 2019 and 2020. Many ZOR's members and planning board members do know about this, and, um, I will, I am going to be seeking something different. Um, briefly to reiterate, when the zoning ordinance was repealed, so were its CCAs and CZs. All CCAs were upon execution incorporated into the zoning ordinance by reference. The city recognized the CCAs as part of the zoning ordinance when they issued the necessary approvals and permits, including site plan approval and building permits so that development in the contract zones occurred. This opinion considers a CZA a permit. A CZA is not a permit. This opinion argues that some developers have vested rights. No, the only vested rights that may exist would belong to the developers who have a valid building permit. The planning board should not be currently deliberating on contract zones based on his or the planner's opinions stated at a recent planning board meeting. FYI, the planning board members received this opinion on March 18th last Tuesday with the request of to discuss it on April 15th. I highly recommend that council engage and direct the administrator to seek a second legal opinion from city solicitor Rasheen. Blue Wave Solar Brook, uh, Solar Deep Brook. I did receive the foyer last Monday, reviewed it, and as suspected, will forward my findings to council. Only council negotiates fees and a refund was being sought. Also, attorney Rasheen should review the extensions approval as I brought forth before. Deputy Administrator of Community Development in your budget book tonight, the administrator is seeking council approval for this new position. All other positions are named. Who is this person? Please mandate no lateral or internal move to fill this position. As, as in the city solicitor position, Saco critically needs new blood for the administrator to appoint. We have witnessed the failure of the code compliance office officer position formed by this council, the two-and-a-half-year delay of the LRPC, the merging of economic development and planning, and the common denominators of the endemic corruption and failures of systemic processes in Saco, the failure of Chapter Four in code enforcement as in its positions, roles, and responsibilities prior to you merging the four, um, items in the budget for that position. This position requires new blood, or defer this to next year's budget. And lastly, on page six of the citywide organizational chart, please know the hierarchy of the, of who you serve in Saco. It is the citizens, then it filters downwards. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there's anyone else wishing to speak, please step forward. Okay, not seeking anyone looking for recognition. Moving on to item eight, uh, seven this evening, and that is new business, and we do have our fiscal 2026 budget presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. It is indeed a pleasure for me to, um, present my proposed fiscal year 2026 municipal budget for the city of Saco. What I'd like to do now is just introduce to you a couple of people at the table. My immediate right is Judy Blancher. She's been acting, um, finance director. Then we have Jennifer Henderson, who will take over as finance director on June 1st. I've also provided all of you with copies of the budget along with the budget presentation. So, moving on to the budget process. The annual budget serves as the foundation for the city of Saco's financial plan and assists in controlling the financial stability and health of the local government. Um, the city of Saco has a budget process that begins in January and ends with the city council adoption of the budget in May of each year. This year, that is anticipated to be May 12th. The mayor and city council are legally required to adopt a balanced budget where revenues equal expenditures. Uh, for the general fund, the use of fund balance is allowable as a revenue line item to meet a balanced budget. The budget development, uh, I've worked with the finance director and each department to develop departmental budgets based on previous years' budgets, actual expenditures, trends, and amended for any new initiatives. One of the themes that will come out of this year's budget, I think, will be the issue of wages and fringe benefits, along with some other items relative to, uh, supported entities and capital improvements. I was, I work with each department to prepare and submit a five-year capital plan to the city council, and I want to thank Jennifer Henderson and Travis Moore for their work on this five-year capital plan. Uh, the budget presentations tonight, we're here to have the presentation on the city administrator's budget. Last week, you heard from the superintendent of schools. I'd like to turn it over to Judy Blancher to continue.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. As John Behanko had introduced me, I'm Judy Blancher, and I am the interim finance director for Saco. This is my first time, um, in front of the city council, and it is my honor to present to you along with the city administrator, the Saco's proposed FY26 budget. Uh, just before we jump into the proposed budget, I would like to say that this has really been a wonderful experience, and I've had the opportunity to get to know Saco a little bit better, and was fortunate enough to work alongside such very talented and dedicated department heads and support staff that you have here in the city. So, moving along into the total general fund budget, um, and as you know, that property taxes really is your major funding source to pay for the services provided for the city. The general fund is broken into two major sections. We talk about the operating budget and the non-operating budget. Uh, the proposed budget this evening is presented to you at a total of eighty million, three hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars. This is about a six-point-seven million-dollar increase, or nine-point-two over fiscal year '25, and we're going to go into the impacts of that specifically this evening. The operating budget, um, is, makes up forty-three percent of the total budget, and these are expenditures associated with your day-to-day services provided by your city departments. And then the non-operating budget, or fifty-seven percent of the total, are expenditures associated with debt service, capital outlay, your county tax obligation. And with this municipal budget, um, on the municipal side of the house, the school department is considered non-operating because it's a transfer to the school operations. Focusing on the operating budget first, the total operating budget is thirty-four-point-nine million dollars, and it's broken down by the chart on the right-hand side of the slide here, where it has the general government departments, and this is mostly your departments located in city hall, um, that services the citizens, and that makes up sixteen percent. Public Works is twenty-one percent of the operating budget. Parks and Rec is nine percent, police twenty-one percent, fire nineteen, and then general administration is where you're housing most of your fringe benefits, and so, um, that has a higher percentage of thirty-one percent. One of the new initiatives this year the city implemented in collaboration with the school department mid-year cycle in FY25 was the creation of the facility department.
I'd like to just make a, a quick note about that. Uh, as you recall, last year, you met with the school board and the superintendent, and what came out of that was a proposal to bring forward a combined facilities department. Uh, we talked about the facilities department not being about, uh, huge savings in the, in the budget, but to have more coordination and timely response to maintenance. As we go forward in the next couple of years for the new elementary school complex, it's going to be important to have one entity looking at all of these, um, systems that are going to be at these two buildings. So, um, working with Don Roth and the superintendent of schools, uh, we've gotten off to a good start. Uh, Don has been extremely busy, uh, and I think, from what I've heard, the, many of these principals are very satisfied with how he is responding to their needs. Uh, when he arrived, he had, I don't know, some like five hundred, uh, open work orders that he had to work through. He also has been working very closely with them to do a more, um, robust snow removal for, uh, the schools that had been an issue before. So, uh, we, you know, like anything else, uh, we need to work through this in the first year, but as I said, I think it, from Don's leadership, I think we're seeing some positive results. So, moving on to the next slide, the operating budget. As I mentioned earlier, seventy-two percent of the operating budget is for salaries and benefits. That's about three-point-five million dollars. Uh, the remaining other operating is about six-hundred thousand dollars. Uh, these are the major drivers of what's increasing the budget. Going to, over to the next slide, talking about full-time staffing, uh, we see that there are four proposed new positions in the budget. Uh, as indicated, uh, earlier, the deputy city administrator of community development, which will be overseeing planning, codes, economic development, and assessing. The next one is two firefighters, and the funding, as we did last year, will be delayed until the, uh, third quarter of the fiscal year or January of 2026. One of the reasons we do this is that, e, once the budget is adopted in May and, and starts in July, uh, it takes a while to get, uh, through the process to hire. So, by the time we're ready to hire, sometimes maybe November, December. So, we thought it best to, again, have these two positions ready to go in, uh, January of 2026. Uh, the parks and recreation department is, uh, requesting a new program or, uh, two position. Some of the personnel cost drivers, as I mentioned earlier, um, one of the things we had, um, to deal with last year was turnover. Uh, right now, we're trying to attract, train, and retain, and motivate qualified personnel to meet the needs of our citizens. Uh, also the pay fair and reasonable salaries based on economic conditions and labor market. And I will tell you, last year was a very difficult year for us in the, uh, police department area where we were losing staff to other communities that had created a, a, a higher wage scale than we could even possibly have at, uh, last year. But, working with the city council, which I appreciate, uh, we were able to bring the salaries up, and we had a one-year contract that we dealt with, with the patrol, uh, union, and, uh, that is set to expire in, uh, June of 2025, but we're now continuing our negotiations with them. But the good news is, many of the contracts are already set, uh, for, uh, June of '27, and the fire department for, uh, June of '26. Primarily, the COLAs are about four-point-seven-five percent, uh, for, uh, some of the unions, as well as the non-union personnel. Uh, the payroll contingency you'll see at the bottom of the slide is for a couple of things, for the negotiated patrol salaries and for, uh, the non-uni personnel for adjustments for market rates, compression, and pay equity. Uh, some of the reallocation of positions, I want to note, uh, fiscal year '26, there's a change, a harbor master will be moved from administration to the fire department. The deputy city administrator of community development, added to the administration, again, will be overseeing the planning, economic development, codes, and assessing. The facilities department head count is also in this budget. Um, the school department will be reimbursing the city for the director and the assistant director, a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Some of the mid-year changes that I, I've advised council of is that the public works head count- count associated with facilities move to facilities budget for FY '26, and new position added to public works for electrical, mechanic, and operator positions. We found that there was a need for an additional electrician, primarily for the school system as well as the city. So, this person not only does electrical work for inside the buildings, but also for our traffic signalization as well.
And then fringe benefits are associated with all the personnel costs, salaries, overtime, stipends, they're all budgeted within the individual department's budget throughout the budget document. However, the benefits that are budgeted together in the general administration section of the operating budget. And the impacts include health insurance. Now, health insurance rates are subject to claim experience, and it's expected to increase pretty significantly. Emily Roy had indicated that. But it doesn't take effect until January of each year, so it's halfway, and we will not have those rates available to us until about fall, before the new calendar year. Other impacts would be the unemployment and workers' comp, nearly 12% increase. Retirement contributions are showing here as a decrease, and this is one area which is very, very difficult to control the budget with vacancies and between the number of options that are provided to the employees on retirement, and the vacancies and so forth. So, it's showing a slight decrease, but we went through that line item pretty carefully to estimate, Emily Roy and I did, to estimate that cost here. Other taxes and benefit increases, about 25.6%, and mostly due to the main paid family medical leave tax that was implemented halfway through your fiscal year '25. So, as a result in '26, that's going to be fully funded, and it's a 1% tax, but it's shared a half a percent employees' pay and a half a percent paid by the employer. And then anticipated recruitment costs increases are due to the number of vacancies that are on the table right now. Other operating impacts that are outside the salaries and benefits make up 28% of your total operating budget. And for fiscal year '26, the proposed budget represents an increase of about $587,000, or 6% increase over fiscal year '25. And this is where the department heads really worked diligently to minimize their cost increases, analyze trending and past spending, to see where costs are truly necessary or not necessarily. But still facing cost increases associated with inflation that have hit several areas, such as software and annual maintenance, dues and membership, and utilities and things of that nature. General assistance is showing a pretty much of, almost a 40% increase here, and general assistance is immediate aid to those financially in need in your community. And so, that has been hit pretty hard in the last year or so. Contingency is showing a decrease, and that is because the elimination of the senior tax rebate that was implemented and was eliminated, and that's where that was funded. And then the city administrator will speak more on the supported entities.
Thank you, Judy. The next slide, you'll see supported entities. For fiscal year '25, the city council approved $1.1 million in supported entities. This year, there is a request from various entities for a $377,000 increase, or $1,467,000. On the chart, you'll see some of the major organizations' requests. The Dyer Library is requesting going from $859,000 to $1,970,000, or about $238,000 increase. Age-friendly, this year, we provide them with $74,000. They're requesting $162,000 for an $88,000 increase. Sweetser is new this year for a request of $10,000. Bedford Food Pantry, which we provided $1,000 last year, is requesting $13,000, or $12,000 increase. And the Saco Food Pantry, last year got $1,000, and they're requesting $10,000 for a total increase of $9,000. Those five entities alone make up $357,000 of increases. And I just want to mention to the council that I did not touch this or remove them. I really believe this is a city council policy decision. It's clearly in your wheelhouse, and I would support any need that you have for getting additional information. But I think it's important, because they run the gambit of all kinds of agencies, that the city council should really be heavily involved in terms of making these decisions. Judy?
So, that concludes the operating side of the budget, so now we're going to switch gears to your non-operating. Non-operating expenditures consist of funding required for expenditures that are not directly attributed to your day-to-day operations. And again, for this presentation, a municipal budget transfer to the school falls under the non-operating budget, and as you can see from this chart here, that makes up 72% of the total non-operating budget. What is also notable here is debt service. There is, as you can see, it went down. There are a number of lease purchases that were dropping off from the FY '25, showing a decrease in debt service in '26, or about 7%. And then the following slides will talk about the other non-operating items.
Thank you. The next slide deals with the capital outlay. Capital outlay for fiscal year '25 was set at $2.2 million. For fiscal year '26, it's proposed at $2.8 million, or a $576,000 increase. I want to make note of some of the initiatives that are in this capital plan that have been talked about throughout last year and since I've been your city administrator. One of the initiatives we're going to propose is $300,000 for dredging, $250,000 for dune restoration and sand replenishment, $200,000 for sheeple wall installation on North Ave and Main Street. This is the first year for a two-year set aside, and $175,000 for the Dyer Library for safety upgrades, parking lot upgrade, and used service space reconfigurations. I did encourage the Dyer Library to submit these requests, because I firmly believe that there is a deficit in terms of infrastructure improvements over at the library that need to be addressed, like I indicated, fire safety upgrades, the parking lot, and other reconfigurations within the library itself to make them more efficient and user-friendly.
And just a note there that the complete capital outlay listing is listed on page 20 of your budget document, and the full capital improvement plan begins on page 215. Now, the York County tax. Saco is one of 29 communities that make up the York County. York County tax obligation is calculated by two components. One is your proportion of all 29 communities based on the prior year's state valuation or the state equalized valuation, and the second component is compared to the county's adopted budget. Now, in fiscal year '25, Saco's assessment was 6.87% of the total tax obligation, ranking Saco the sixth largest or the highest contributor of the 29 communities. Now, as this table shows, it was nearly a 10% increase in the county tax, going from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25. So, there is kind of indication, we budgeted here a 5% over budget from prior year. We're not sure where that's going to fall into place, and since the county is on the same cycle as Saco, we're not sure exactly when we'll have that.
Yeah, and I did reach out to the manager of York County, and he indicated that they're still in the process, but it could range, you know, for different communities are going to be at different levels, and he estimated we may be at a 6% increase, where others might be higher. So, I just, so we tried to put together something that we thought would be conservative right now, and if we have to, we'll adjust that later on through the budget process.
Now, just highlighting some of the revenues that offset the tax levy that is collected by through property taxes. And it's, you know, not any new news, but property taxes does make up 75% of the total revenues to fund the general fund operating in your non-operating budget. State revenues equates to about 9% of the total revenues. And then local fees, licenses, permits, and other local services established mostly by the city ordinance make up about 11% of all revenues, and these fees are identified in the fee schedule, which begins on page 28 of your budget document. And there are a number of proposed new fee changes for fiscal year '26, and they're identified in the fee schedule. The city council also adopts the fee schedule through this whole budget process. And then some of the just major highlights where we're seeing some trending for increases, again, state revenue sharing, motor vehicle registration, building permits, and fees coming in from the Parks and Recreation Department. So, now with, we'll talk about the unassigned fund balance, and as you all know, the audit for fiscal year '24 has not been finalized.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about that a little bit. We aren't the only ones experiencing these late audits. It's happening, I'm on a list, sir, for the managers, and it's happening in other places. Quite frankly, I heard from somebody that knows about these things, and our audit has three people on it, and I understand that three of them have left the firm, so we'll probably delay it a little bit more, but we're really trying to put together what we have as an unassigned fund balance that's unaudited. One thing I would mention, even if this is the amount, the $1.1 million, it would be my recommendation that the city council, because you have to conform with the ordinance, I would say you take $1.1 million from your unassigned fund balance, move it over to a committed fund balance for future infrastructure improvements, rolling stock, that type of thing. Now, the important thing to note about committed fund balance is that the only people that control committed fund balance is the city council. So, that money gets set aside, and next year, if you choose to use it for a special project or for a one-time expenditure, it's all in the hands of the city council to make that determination. So, instead of applying it to reduce the tax rate this year, it would be my recommendation that you put it into committed fund balance, because I think you're going to, it'll give you more options next year on different projects. So, and we see coming down the road a few other things, not only coastal resiliency, but also improvements to various buildings and the like. So, that would be my recommendation.
And just a couple of comments on this slide specifically, also is that, this is starting with the fiscal year '24. Both Jennifer and I were not participating through the day-to-day operations through that timeframe. So, we're waiting for the auditors to do all of their fieldwork and put together the financial statements. You know, they could have some adjusting entries that we're unaware of at this point. So, I just kind of caution you in looking at this table. And also, as you go down through where it says unassigned fund balance to date, and it says in parentheses, no forecasting FY '25. So, basically, I'm not saying that there's any surplus in FY '25. So, this could all change.
Right.
Pretty dramatically.
And the important thing is, if you go from my recommendation, the city council could then move to use that committed to replenish anything that you found to be lacking. Okay. The next slide deals with property tax and the mill rate. I want to just describe that if the proposed budget is adopted as presented, it'll result in an estimated tax rate of $14.20, which represents a 15-cent increase, or 1.1% over fiscal year '25. If you took, if you take a look at the slide, you'll see that in fiscal year '24, the tax rate was $14.75. That was the revaluation year. That was dropped in fiscal year '25 to $14.05. And going forward with this budget, it would require the tax rate to be at $14.20. Moving to the next slide, I did a slide that dealt with a median assessed single-family residential home valued at $420,000, at an estimated rate of $14.20. So, as I indicated, the annual increase for this home would be $63, or $5.25 a month. Looking to the right on the slide, you'll see the actual changes for the mill rate. '24 to '25 was $14.75, down to $14.05, which is a 70-cent reduction, or 4.7%. And then moving over to '26, you see that we have a slight increase of 15 cents to $14.20, or 1.1% over fiscal year '25. Going down to the property tax bill, these are actual dollars and cents. In fiscal year '24, we see that the assessed value of home at $420,000 would have had a tax bill of $6,195. In fiscal year '25, because of the drop in the tax rate, that went down to $5,900, or a savings of $300. And estimated for '26, you'll see that it goes up to $5,964, or a $63 increase over fiscal year '25, or 1.1%.
And then this slide just breaks down the municipal portion versus the school expenditures versus your county mill rate. So, it's estimated that the municipal side will be $6.42, school expenditures $7.44, and .34 for county tax, for a total of $14.20.
Thank you. So, moving forward, the budget calendar, as I described earlier in the presentation, the city council reviews these budgets with the department heads in April, and so April 7th, 14th, and 28th, we have various departments that will be coming in and having workshop with the city council to discuss their specific budgets. May 5th, there'll be a public hearing and review of the budget motions, that the motions that we'll have provided for you on for the May 12th discussion, and also amendments from the city council and discussion about those amendments. And then, hopefully, on May 12th, we'll have budget adoption of both the city and school. Also, just on the next slide, we talk about public participation. Public comment is welcome. Near the beginning of every council meeting, there's an opportunity for people to speak. A formal public hearing on the entire budget will be included on May 5th, and so we'll also be talking about the water resource recovery department, schools, capital plan. And again, just to mention that's scheduled for February 5th. If anybody wants to leave us a message or comment relative to the budget, you can send budget questions to thebudget@sacoMaine.org, okay? I just want to take the moment here to take this opportunity to thank the finance department, Judy Belanger, and Jennifer Henderson, and all those that work in the finance department, as well as the department heads. This year, as you are well aware, we had some major turnover in the finance department, both on the budget and finance director. It was challenging to continue running the operations and making sure that we maintain all accounting procedures and keep those in place, as well as putting together a fiscal year '26 budget. So, with those changes, it was challenging, and both Judy and Jennifer really stepped up. And I also want to thank the communications department for their help on this budget, and also all the department heads, because it really was a team effort this year. Some days, I didn't know if we were going to make it, but we did. We were here, and it's just been a pleasure to work with all the people within the departments and also with the finance department. The one thing I would have to say as my closing comment is it's important for us to recognize that we need more depth in our organization, especially in the accounting area. You don't want to get into a situation where you get behind in, you know, your accounting procedures and things of that sort. So, I think for what we're trying to do- So I think for what we're trying to do is hire a senior accountant so that we have backup so we only we just don't have one accountant in at City Hall. We have a couple so that we can continue to move forward. So I wanted to just again, like I said, thank everybody for their their assistance, and I would open it up for the mayor to allow for questions if council members have any.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Thank you to the three of you. Very clear, concise description and presentation for it. So do we have any counselors who have any questions or comments? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, city administrator, and the finance team. I echo the mayor's comments. I found the budget book to be clear as always, which I appreciate, and this presentation was also very clear and straightforward, and I appreciate you pulling out those points. I do have a couple of questions I just want to clarify. I think I already know the answer to some, but I just want to make sure that I have it and also maybe for the public. And the first one was on the slide with the staff counts and highlighting the new some of the new hires, if maybe we could switch there.
Mm-hmm.
And I'll just note that the positions described don't match the numbers in the table, and I think that's because the city administrator starts at three and ends at three, whereas the fire and ambulance shows three net gains, which doesn't quite match the text on the right. And that's because the harbor master is moving from the city administrator to fire, and so that opens a slot in the city administration, which the new deputy city administrator fills and has that net addition to the fire department. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
That is correct.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I followed along with that well. And then my next question was under the other operating impact slide where general assistance is listed. And I noticed, as was highlighted, that 39.2% increase in general assistance. Now, much of that is reimbursed by the state, right? 70% or something?
70% other than 70% is reimbursed by the state other than our person itself. So our administrator or our person that works does not get reimbursed, but all the expenditures are reimbursed at 70%.
And so while there's a increase in the expenditures budgeted here, presumably there's also an increase in the revenues budgeted when I look there.
Absolutely.
Is that correct?
Right.
That's perfect. And then my third question was on the fund balance section. And concerning the budgetary use of the unassigned fund balance for the fiscal year '26 of $951,650, and is that just going to the general fund for general tax relief, or what is the budgeted use of that fund balance?
Yes, so last year in the FY '25 budget, there was a slide on specific capital projects that this number amounted to, the 951,000. And so we just level funded the use of fund balance so that there wouldn't be any variance, but certainly also to cover for capital outlay items as well.
We try to utilize them for one-time revenue use, excuse me, one-time expenditure uses.
Gotcha. And that's in the capital budget? Did I understand that correctly or no?
Again, we would refer it as items in the capital budget, right?
Perfect. Thank you. Tell my questions. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I think more observation than in question. I just I think it's important for us to understand that a large part of this increase is related to staff wages and fringes. Being a party to lots of conversations on contracts and renegotiation and fairness, I appreciate all that effort. I think it's really become fruitful for us to retain folks and be an attractive place to be employed in terms of compensation. But there's a cost to that, so I understand that. I think that those who may be looking at this and really aren't actively engaged in the hiring of personnel, you may not realize that not only are wages running high for the types of positions that we have, but the talent pool is pretty thin. And so supply and demand, basic economics working in favor of compensation. So it's important for people to understand the challenges that that creates. And I think that we've this council has done a pretty good job of being supportive of contract wage increases to retain folks. We have, you know, no city's perfect, but I think we have a my own personal opinion is we have a very, very solid group of personnel, department heads. They all work hard. They do the very best they can do, day in, day out. And so for us to be able to have a compensation strategy that reflects that, I think is important moving down the road ways. I might add that for this council that we're going to be talking about housing policy. And I think one of the fringe benefits that we have yet to accomplish is that of finding a way to offer workforce housing to our our new hires. So I would encourage all of us to think about that as we move in to the discussions on our future housing policy. And then I think there are a few issues with the supported entities that I think we can deal with when they come before us. And I do respect and appreciate the fact that, in my opinion, you're absolutely correct. Decisions about supported entities should rest with the council, and I appreciate you bouncing that back to us because that is definitely our role. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I don't think we're seeing anyone with any questions. I would like to again just say thank you for the hard work on this. Very happy with the first outcome so far, and I would like to thank you, city administrator, for the work and the connection that you've made with the Dyer with the Dyer Library, bringing on a new executive director, coming into the new have really built a relationship with the city, and I'm happy to see some of that reflected in this budget. It's a benefit to the city and to all of our residents, and we're blessed to have such a historic building. But unfortunately, there again, that does come with a cost to have such a building of that caliber for us.
It is a wonderful institution, and you're right, we can't let it deteriorate.
Thank you. Thank you.
All I have to say is again, thank you to all the staff that worked on this, and also thank you to the council for listening tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, that now takes us to item eight, and that is the administrative update. City Administrator Manko?
Thank you, Your Honor. The first item is again just dealing with the departmental presentations that will take place in the Mondays in April, the council workshop and public hearing, May 5th, and council approval on May 12th. Also, just wanted to give a little bit of an update on Ferry Road Culvert Crossing. The at the city council workshop was held on March 4th discussing design options of the Ferry Road Culvert Crossing. City Council was in support of a 10-foot multi-use path with the request this topic to be directed to the Traffic and Safety Committee for discussion. On March 20th, 2025, the Traffic Safety Committee hosted a joint meeting with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, B-PAC. The joint meeting had unanimous support for the 10-foot multi-use path. Public Works will move forward with the Ferry Road Culvert Crossing design to accommodate 22 feet wide roadway and a 10-foot wide multi-use path. That's all I have.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions or comments for the city administrator? Counselor Edwards?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the closure on or for the work on Ferry, will that require a road closing?
Let me ask the Director Moore to come forward and speak to that.
Good evening.
Hi. So for the for the for the replacement, yes, that will be a closure. We're still in the permitting process right now, so we're hoping the earliest that work would be done would be this fall. Other than most in-stream work, this work actually has to take place in the winter. So it's a it would be a November start at the earliest.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And we do have the detour access to Bayview would be the alternate route. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Now takes us to item nine, and that's council discussion and comment. Any counselors wishing to speak? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Your Honor. On a lighter note, a couple of days late, but happy birthday, and I hope you had a good one.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And pursuant to my responsibilities as Deputy Mayor, good health, and I hope you're feeling okay.
I will say I was honored to spend my birthday with Brad Goulet and the Goulet Foundation on the Love Your Brain fundraiser, and it was a wonderful event, so. Okay, now takes us to item 10, and that is an adjournment this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
No.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn at 7:22, passes 6:1. Thank you, everyone, and have a great evening. And thank you, staff, and we'll see you on the 7th.